Recording.
Great, so I will call this meeting of the Planning Board Lebanon Planning Board Regulation Subcommittee to Order at 12:30 PM on Friday, August 7th. Rebecca, remind me, do we do our call, sorry, do the roll call first or do you want to read your?
No, you do the roll call after the preamble.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, so I'll do that. This is the preamble for publicly open electronic meetings. Good afternoon. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 issued on March 23rd, 2020, in accordance with Executive Order 2024, this public body is authorized to meet electronically without a forum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with Emergency Order 12, we have taken action to provide access to the meeting by telephone with potential access, additional access by video, provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, and provide a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, the video and call-in functions of Microsoft Teams software are being used as a communication platform. At this meeting, all members of the Subcommittee have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting by visiting lebanonnh.gov/live and navigating to the pertinent listed meeting. Instructions on how to attend by telephone are provided on this webpage. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, all speakers are asked to identify themselves and dispel their first and last names before beginning to speak. To improve sound quality and reduce, oops, I lost it, to prove, I lost where I was. There. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, please ensure your microphones are muted unless you're asking a question or making a comment. If anybody has a problem with access during the course of the meeting, please call 617-600-8646 or email owens@lebanonnh.gov. In the event that there are technical difficulties and we are unable to hold the meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. All votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. The meeting shall begin by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their name, please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under RSA 91A. Okay, so.
Alrighty, so Matt Hall is here and alone. Kathy?
Kathy's here and alone.
Joan?
Joan is here and alone.
Tom?
Tom is here and alone.
Wonderful, we're all alone.
And then, you probably want to do the other member people.
Oh, yeah, that's right, okay, so staff?
Rebecca Owens, I'm here alone.
Tim Corwin here alone.
Oh, there's Tim.
Hi, Tim, and councilman?
Clifton Bealow, here alone.
Wonderful. Before we start getting into the agenda, I just wanted to note that I will have to depart at 2:00 PM. This is my first week back at work since the baby was born, and so my schedule has been a little hairy. So I thought it might make some sense for us, for the Subcommittee, to discuss when the next meeting will be now, just to get that out of the way, so that when I depart, that doesn't become an issue of Matt's gone, what time would another meeting work? Rebecca, we had talked about a potential date about two and a half, well, nearly three weeks from now, right?
Yeah, because, and I don't know, maybe, Tim, correct me if this has changed, but it looks like the week of August 17th is not convenient for you.
I'm, yeah, sorry, can you hear me? I'm hoping to take vacation that week, but we'll see.
Well, that's, and that's fine, this is Matt Hall, that's fine. Tim, I'm going to be pretty unavailable most of that week anyway, and it sounds like Rebecca from our conversation that if we did it the following week, that would give staff time to prepare for some of the more substantive things we'll be discussing in the next meeting.
Right.
So I think we were contemplating, I wanted to see what, A, if this will work for staff, and B, if it'll work for the members of the committee. I think we were contemplating doing 12:30 PM on Thursday, August 27th. How would that be for you all?
It's fine.
Fine with me.
Okay.
What was the date again? Matt, what was the date again?
Sure, it was same time, 12:30 PM on Thursday, the 27th of this month.
I think that's fine. Let me step away for just a minute, I had to check the calendar on the stairs, I'm down in the basement.
Sounds good.
I've got some other meetings, so hold on.
While Tom's doing that, just reiterate.
Right?
Thursday.
Say that again?
Thursday rather than Friday.
Yes.
Sorry, Rebecca?
I was just going to say, we'll get to it in a minute, but with the more substantial amendments, we would be wanting to get those to you at least a week in advance, so Tim and I'll figure that out, because today's a fairly light meeting, I anticipate.
So that date works for me.
Great.
Okay. Okay, I'll let others know.
Alrighty, well, I think next we have on the agenda is the approval of the July 10th minutes. I'll open this up to the Subcommittee members, does anyone have comments or corrections?
I have to make a comment. I couldn't even find them. I'm not having a good day, so I'm just very discouraged.
Was that, do you have the agenda for the meeting by email?
Yeah, yeah, and there wasn't anything attached to it, because it said, says on the agenda, see attached, 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 but I couldn't find them.
So I'm going to share my screen for a minute.
I just.
Well, Joan, would you prefer that we push the approval of the minutes to next meeting?
No, just go ahead, just, I don't want to hold stuff up. I'll just agree with.
I just want to make sure that what you see when you click the link on the agenda is what I'm showing on the screen here.
I can't even find, I can't even find that now, I'm just totally discombobulated today. I would really rather not even be here, but out of a sense of obligation, I'm here, but
Okay.
I'm not operating on all my cylinders today, and it's just, it just happens.
Yeah, sure, of course.
Too many meetings this week.
Kathy, or Tom, do you have any comments on the minutes?
I think I missed part of the last meeting, so I, you know, I don't, I was counting on Joan.
Well.
I know you were a little bit late, but you hadn't missed much.
You know, Matt, I looked them over and I didn't see anything that stands out glaring, you know, at the end, it kind of summarized my statement fairly well, it wasn't, you know, they're not word for word for what was said, but I didn't see anything that was, I guess I would move to approve the minutes.
Excellent, well, and Tom, I agree with you, I reviewed them, I thought it was a good summation of our conversation, I didn't see any glaring errors, so, yeah, I will, I will take your motion. Does anybody want to second that? I'll second it.
Okay.
All right.
We're all on half cylinders.
Moved and seconded, any comments? Okay, all those in favor, we'll go through the roll call. Matt, I vote aye. Kathy?
I'll vote aye.
Joan?
I'll vote aye.
And Tom?
I vote aye.
All right, unanimous.
If I could just interject a second, I figured out what my problem is. It's all this, doing all this stuff on computer. I can't keep track of all this stuff, I'm a paper person, I was always a paper person, I keep very good track of my huge stacks of papers, but I can't, I can't do it electronically, and that's all there is to it. That's why I, that's why I can't, couldn't find them, because I'm looking for too many.
It's very difficult.
What, Tim?
No, I was just, it's very, it's very difficult, it's confusing, it's not.
Well, I can't, I can't find something that's not physically there. I'm sure it's not physically there, I'm sure of it.
Speaking of physical issues, light, kind of physical, I guess photons are physical.
We're buying down-facing outdoor lights, yay!
So on that note, Rebecca, should we just, should the councilman just go ahead with any, his comments, or do?
Yeah, let me share my screen, or unless, Cliff, would you prefer to share your screen, or do you want me to share mine with that item?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, let me pull that up. That should help a little bit. Okay. If it will work. Okay. That should appear for you in a minute. Oh, that's the minutes, shoot.
Sharing your screen is part of the Advanced OSHA course.
Now, here it is, okay. Now, it's taking forever to load.
Yeah, it's because it's not there, I'm sorry, it's not there.
Yeah, I don't know why that.
Well, Rebecca, while that's loading, Cliff, do you want to, do you, I don't know if you want, if we wanted to go through this, you know, very specifically, or if you had a broader kind of perspective you wanted to share at all?
Well, sure. The, the issue of color temperature of lighting is one that's a little obscure to a lot of people, because it's sort of a technical issue, but what happened is, in the early days of LED outdoor lighting, people realized it was a lot more efficient, you get more lumens per watt, and so, early on, most of the LEDs that were developed were what's called a cooler color temperature, they were closer to regular daylight. Daylight is actually rather cool, because if you think about the blue sky, the blue sky is actually, is partially a reflection of the fact that midday sunlight has actually a fair lot of, a lot of blue spectrum in it. And what's happened is, as communities put in, converted to LED street lighting, a lot of residents in some communities got very upset, because the bright new, a street lighting that was often 4,000 or 5,000 K, this K is Kelvin, it's a scale that was developed for measuring the color balance of light, and daylight ranges from around 2,000 or 2,500 K right at sunrise and sunset, it moves fairly quickly through 3,000 K to 3,500, on an overcast day, it might be 4,000 or 5,000 K, on a bright sunny day like today, it's probably 6,000, around 6,000 K or something like that. There's also this other measure, which is color rendering index, which kind of tells you how fully balanced the light is, because, you know, it's a, you know, it's a bunch of different wavelengths of the light source, and, you know, the objects only reflect back the wavelengths that exist in the light source. So, in the early days of outdoor lighting, going from incandescent, which is around 2,700 K, to low pressure sodium, that was the first kind of more efficient lighting, you know, that's like 2,500 or 2,300 K, but it had really poor color rendering, so it was a very yellow light, that didn't really render colors at all. So, make a long story short, you know, this is something I got interested in a long time ago, but when we started looking at doing LED street lighting for the city, reviewing the literature, there were communities that went with 4,000 K that people were so upset, because it was disrupting sleep and such, that they actually decided to take all that lighting out and put in 3,000 K or warmer. A few years ago, an organization called the International Dark Sky Association developed recommendations that outdoor lighting should be 3,000 K or warmer, and they actually have a standard that a lot of outdoor lighting has qualified for, which is dark sky friendly. New Hampshire has a law that promotes, that encourages communities to promote dark skies by undertaking, even empowering ordinances to that effect. And a few years ago, as I was researching this, I came to my attention that the American Medical Association had really looked into this issue and come up with a recommendation that was adopted by the whole American Medical Association as official policy position, and that's, the background on that is attached as part of my memo from June, recommending as well that all outdoor lighting be 3,000 K or warmer. And so, in any case, the city itself has adopted a policy of 3,000 K or warmer lighting for its own outdoor lighting, and also, you know, I use this, some of this documentation to make a case with the PUC that Liberty Utilities, as they're offering outdoor LED lighting, should not offer just 4,000 K, but also offer 3,000 K, and actually make that the default option. If somebody doesn't specify, they want a, Liberty Utilities provided LED streetlight, they had proposed only to offer 4,000 K in most of the product line, but they did end up agreeing as part of a settlement that went into effect right at the end of June, to offer all their outdoor lighting in 3,000 K, as well as some of it's also in 4,000 K, but make 3,000 K the default. And so, if you scroll down a little bit, and see the picture that I provided at the end of my memo, I was really struck by the fact that the U-Haul operational on Hanover Street had fairly recently put in some new outdoor lighting, which I can see from the roof of our building at One Court Street, and you see that in that picture, and if the bar is blocking that, if you just click on the background on the picture, the menu bar for Teams should go away.
Oh.
Or you can scroll up just a little higher, that, on my screen, the bar was blocking it, but now it's gone, or scroll down a little further, so the picture goes.
Now the other way.
There you go.
No, that's too far.
It's funny, everyone sees different things, okay.
That's good. You can see the contrast between what's mostly, mostly high-pressure sodium, which is, which is the orange light, you can see in the foreground, lower left, some incandescent lighting coming out through windows, that's around 2,700 K, and you can see the LED lighting that the U-Haul place put in, which is probably 4,000 or 5,000 K, which, for a while, that was all, that was available in a lot of the outdoor lighting, and what's happened over the past five or six years, is that most of the manufacturers of LEDs have figured out ways to make 3,000 K or warmer, almost or even more efficient than the, than the cooler temperatures. So, now, today, in comparison to even five years ago, almost all outdoor lighting is available in 3,000 K, as well as 4,000 or 5,000 K. If you go back to the proposed language in the Site Plan Regulations.
Want me to show the regulations themselves, or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Cliff, when you say 3,000 K or warmer, does warmer, do the numbers go down then? Is that?
Yeah, yep, yep. And the, well, I don't know the whole history of the Kelvin thing, but essentially, that corresponds to wavelengths, the warmer, warmer wavelengths have a shorter wavelength, and the longer bluer wavelengths are higher numbered wavelengths. Any case, so, I, some of, some of this language I had put in brackets in my suggestion, and I think Rebecca just decided to.
Yeah, well, interviewing it internally, between me and David and Tim, we agree that the full recommended language made sense, and there was probably no need to shorten it.
Okay, so, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, it sort of expresses some factual predicates, and say, in case somebody, you know, argues against it, in order to minimize the risk of disability glare, and the disability glare, you can almost see from that lighting from U-Haul, that's a thing that's discussed in the AMA May background document, in which they provide a lot of footnotes to scientific studies that found that these bluer lights create disability glare, in part because it changes the way your eye is, we naturally can see in the dark better with warmer temperatures, and when you, when you introduce these higher blue wavelength lights, your eyes don't adjust as readily to when you move out of that lighting into a dark situation, say with just headlights. So it actually, you know, the cooler color LED lighting in particular creates what is termed disability glare, what I just described is part of that.
If light fixtures like Joan just recently bought at Home Depot, if anywhere on that kind of residential lighting fixture, it tells how many Kelvins that, I can't see that.
She's showing the label.
Maybe you could read it, because you can't see it.
What it says is, it says light color, and then it's 3,000 K, and so I didn't, I couldn't remember what numbers you said, that's good or bad.
That's good.
That's on the good side.
Oh, good. And the little chart shows, you know, from, like, this, this side is.
Orangey.
2,700 K, and this fixture is rated at 3,000, and then it says bright white, and then it gets to daylight, and the blue over here is 6,500 K, daylight.
But the recommendation is, I mean, that sounds like that's higher than the recommendation in the language.
Yeah. I had suggested 3,000 K or warmer, which is.
Right, and, but there was another line in the language that noted 2,700, but if, and so for consistency, we had gone to 2,700, but if 3,000 is more realistic, we can, you know, in the future, adjust that, but maybe it should be 3,000.
Cliff, I have a couple of questions, but do you have more to?
No, that was basically it.
Great. Well, so I have two questions. First of all, this makes a lot of sense to me, it sounds great, as, as, it was my background in the history of electricity, that's my training, I love it, love it, love it, love it all. Only two real questions for you. One is, just from a practical standpoint, because I think it's good for the board to know, is this substantially more expensive for anyone, you know, installing these, granted, probably as time goes by, will, you know, as the new technology emerges, it gets cheaper, but I guess right now, today, is this substantially more expensive than the cooler light?
Generally, they're the same price.
Okay, yeah.
And just two examples of that, when Liberty was pushing back in settlement discussions in this case, in which I was acting on behalf of the city, they, they checked with their supplier, and they found out that they could get the same, you know, because their cut sheets all showed the same fixtures were available in 3,000 K, and they checked, and sure enough, they're, it's at the same price. Another example is, there's a company that was contracted by the New Hampshire Department of Transportation to convert all their outdoor lighting, they pay for with Eversource and Unitil territory, but not Liberty's territory, because Liberty's tariff at the time had no provision for this, but they, the initial contract called for everything to be 4,000 degrees Kelvin, and some of the communities had already gone with 3,000 K, and they asked through the vendor that was selected, because the same vendor had installed some of these communities, if DOT wouldn't put in 3,000 K to match what they had otherwise in their community. And at first, DOT said no, and then, there was a hearing on legislation that I had drafted, again on behalf of the city, to enable cities to own their own streetlights, which was not an option up until July 1st of this year, and also to mandate that state agencies use 3,000 K or warmer, consistent, this was within the section of the statute about promoting dark sky friendly policies, and when the Senate passed that bill, the vendor had offered a change order to DOT to switch all of the lights from 4,000 to 3,000 K at the exact same price, no price increase, and DOT at first said no, but when this bill passed in the Senate, they said, okay, we'll do that, we'll just make all of our streetlights outdoor lighting 3,000 K, and it's the same price, and that, for that particular vendor, they happened to have gotten a brand-new Cree LED, which was actually more efficient, so they actually got more lumens per watt from the 3,000 K fixture than the 4,000 K, which is unusual, but was the case, and so, the point being that DOT went with all 3,000 K for the same price as 4,000 K.
Right, and then, I guess my only other little question, and I like, you know, including unless a compelling need for a higher, you know, for a cooler light can be demonstrated, giving a bit of an, you know, a reasonable way for an applicant to talk to us if they really, really, really want cooler light for some reason. I was just curious, can you think of any type of development or situation where?
Yeah.
An applicant would actually really want cooler light?
Well, if I, if I can speak very quickly to that, and I'm sure Counselor Beal has some other thoughts, it's, that would usually be internal lighting, like grocery stores, warehouses, and manufacturing, because in those cases, the cooler light allows more acute visibility of objects being worked on, but I'm not aware of any outdoor ones, because I had the same question and started to look into that before this meeting.
Yeah, the only one I could think about is the hospital.
But.
With like the emergency.
Exterior or exterior.
Yeah, the one argument I have heard is, there are certain sports activities.
Yes, yeah.
That, that where the, you know, the 3,500 or 4,000 K provides a fuller color balance, and there have been some arguments that certain outdoor sports activities benefit from the slightly cooler light. Often, 3,000 K is characterized as warm, and as Joan was saying, the 3,500 or 4,000 K is often called bright white, and then the 5,000 or 6,000 is called, like, daylight.
Yeah. Actually, Cliff, and I did read, though, that the reason for that in sports arenas was primarily because of filming with HDTV filming, so, in order for them to film what's going on in those arenas, which we generally don't have a lot of, you know, ESPN around here, but that, that was what I read was the reason.
Huh, interesting. And I do know that Georgia Light and Power adopted 3,000 K for their standard for most streetlights, but they, for some reason, decided at certain very high-volume traffic interstate exchanges to go with 4,000 K. There, there might be some argument that you get, you know, in a high-traffic situation, you get a little bit better color perception, I don't think it's significant. The ones that Liberty put in in downtown Lebanon and around Colbar and Park, those are 4,000 K, and at the time, they were thinking about 5,000 K, and we talked to them and said, how about 4,000 K, and that's what they went with. At the time, it was a GE fixture, and they didn't even offer a 3,000 K, they have since offered 3,000 K. The question of 2,700 versus 3,000 is interesting, 2,700 is about what incandescent light is. And the International Dark Sky Society has said, you know, that's really preferable to 3,000 K, and at some point in the future, they might change their standard from 3,000 to 2,700, but unfortunately, the reality is that a lot of the products aren't yet available in 2,700 K. You know, we did, we did just get responses to the city's RFP, and it, you know, it specified they had to be 3,000 K or warmer, but we explicitly asked for, you know, suggested that folks provide us an alternative, if, and the example we gave is a 2,700 K fixture, if they, if they, if that was an option, and of the six, six or seven different LED street lighting products that respect, all from different manufacturers, only one of them was available in 2,700 K, I just looked at all the cut sheets, and that's not amongst the two that we're considering in terms of price, but they, they didn't even give us a price, and I noticed there's a footnote. And I noticed there's a footnote for 27 saying long lead time, uh, this is a custom fixture and, and long lead times would, would apply. Um, so, you know, I, I, I was really hoping we'd get some 2,700 K proposals cause I would have liked to be able to go that route. Um, but at least, at least what we're looking at is ones that will be dimmable. So if they're too bright, we can dim them down. Um, and we're also calling for, you know, sharp cutoff. So it doesn't intrude to minimize trespass. And we did call for a hundred percent horizontal cutoff, nothing that, uh, puts light up into the sky, just like the plant, site plan regulations. So.
I have a question on, on that. Um, you just mentioned dimmable and I noticed that the proposed language doesn't, um, encourage that.
No, um, that's, it's a little trickier question because, um, I think having them dimmable is a good idea because then if you, like, if you look at that U-Haul example, um, those are terribly bright, um, and I pity anybody who lives near there. Uh, because there are some apartment buildings and those lights shine right in their windows. Um, uh, but, um, and, and they're clearly not horizontal cutoff because I'm up above them and, and they're shining right. Uh, right at you. And in fact, you can see the, the camera picks it up, but so does my, uh, uh, lens or my glasses. You, you see sort of the, the star shaped, uh, thing that kind of blocks your vision of the sky in that photo. Um.
So I have a question, Cliff.
Kathy, one second. I'm gonna ask one last follow up question, then I'll open it up. Um, this is for Cliff and Rebecca. Just based Cliff and what you just said, would it make more sense for the current, for regulation right now to be 3,000 and then maybe?
That's what I'm hearing.
2,700, maybe like a year or two?
Yeah, that's, that's what I think. Ju- ju- just because people are gonna have a hard time finding products in the 2,700 K, uh, line. Just like Joan probably looked around and she probably only saw 3,000.
I was not aware of it.
Well, that makes, that makes sense. And I, 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 I think that makes a lot of sense to just make it 3,000. And we can, we could even have a, a reminder or something for us to relook at this in a year and a half or two.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Um, um, okay. Well, what, what, what other folks want to know?
This is Kathy and I, I have two or three thoughts here. Uh, the one is with regard to the 3,000, which I think is, is a good change. Mainly because if people aren't going to be able to find 2,700, then we're going to have a whole slew of waivers and, and we can just eliminate the waivers by, if, if the common product that's out there is 3,000, then I, I think 3,000 is something that, you know, we should put. The other comment I had is it, it's confusing. And I mean, the, the correct language is in this suggestion where it says, um, it'll say 3,000 Kelvin or less warmer light. It, it's good that it has the or less in there because when you think of warmer, you think of higher numbers. And, and when it gets cooler, the numbers get higher instead of lower. So it's kind of reverse thinking in there. And I, I, so it's good that we're clear in terms of which way the numbers go. Because I think otherwise an ordinary person might just think, oh, 3,000 or, or warmer, that's 3,000 or higher. And, and then the other question I had is with regard to number eight, right above where it says uplighting is prohibited. And you were talking about that U-Haul station, it, is that legal then what they have? Or, you know, not because they have all that uplighting?
That's a good question. I, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't know if, when they, if they went through site plan review. I, I think site plan regulations only apply. Uh, and, and Tim knows this much better than I do, I would think. Um, I, I don't think site plan regulations apply to something that's not subject to site plan review. If, if, if U-Haul, this is something that has only happened in the past year or so. Um, if, if, if they did go through site plan review like 20 years ago and, and there was something in the ordinance at that time or, uh, the regulations about not having uplighting, uh, then, 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 then they would be in violation of their site plan approval from 20 years ago, but.
Even if they're, even if they didn't have to go through site plan review to change their lighting. I mean, are you just in the city allowed to do something that's illegal because you don't have to go through site plan review?
And it, it's like when someone puts in a sign, it should have comparable, um, consideration.
Yeah. I, I had thought, you know, I should start with what's in our site plan regulations. And then I've, I've actually thought maybe at some point we can enact an ordinance that, um, has general application with all outdoor lighting, because there is that power uh, under the dark sky friendly state policy. It, it actually expressly the references, uh, empowering communities to act ordinances to promote dark sky friendly, uh, lighting. Um, so, so my thought was maybe we could make a general ordinance that would have more general application and give somebody like U-Haul some time to switch over because they've recently made an investment. But, but I, I really don't want to see that stay that way. Cause, cause it's, cause it's affects, if you go back to that image, it, it affects how you can see the, the night sky, um, quite a bit.
Well, at least there should be some way to notify them that their lighting is out of sync with the city requirements.
I, I don't know if Tim is, um, hearing this, but I can follow up on that.
Yeah. The, these, the questions you're asking are definitely, um, Tim and David questions. Um, because.
Why don't I follow up on that?
Yeah.
And, um, but it's a good one, Kathy.
Sorry, I'm here. I, I was, uh, distracted with an email. I apologize. Um, I, I, I think I understand the question, but, um, if I don't, please correct me. Um, if, 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 if there is a, an existing site that, um, you know, received site plan review at some point in the past. Um, as, as, as Cliff noted, they are, they are subject to that approved site plan and must continue to, um, conform to it. Um, so, but to, to the extent that they're switching out poles, and this is where I'm not sure if I heard the question because I was distracted, but if they're switching out poles, um, would they be subject to the new regulations? Um, I, I, I suppose we could make an argument that, that they are, and they could, they could make an argument that, that, that they're not um, required to do so. But as a practical matter, if, if the cost is the same, why wouldn't they?
Or just the fact that they may not even know, they may, they may not have the idea that they, that their lighting doesn't comply with.
Well, anyway, um, well, I think Rebecca's gonna take care of that. Kathy, do you have more questions or should we move on to other folks?
I'm, that was, I'm.
Great. Joan?
I, yeah. Um, um, I don't know where to start and I'm trying to be, trying to be fast. I didn't even think of that when we were looking for these. And what we ended up doing was, well, let's just go to, you know, the place that probably has the most, Home Depot. I hate shopping there, but, um, with the choices that we have. So we went there and 90% of their, what was available for outdoor home lighting was, was totally not complying. It, it was glass, you know, that was letting light spew all over the place. And I'm looking and going, what, the, the, wrong, 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 wrong. And so we ended up, there was only a choice, um, uh, you know, of a few. So this is what we ended up with. They did have those kind that Cliff was talking about where, you know, it's the cylinder. It can be either a cylinder or a square and it's just solid. And the light just goes down and preferably nothing goes up. But that's not what we wanted. Um, and, uh, so we ended up with this one. And price wise, this one, I don't remember exactly, but it was around $45 each. So, you know, to me, that's not a very big price for, um, I mean, I mean, they had many that were lots, lots more. But, um, and on the box, it has the lighting facts, which I didn't realize, even knowing what I know from hearing, um, Cliff's talk. I didn't realize about the light color. So I'm, I'm really pleased that this is, um, that it says what it says. And what it says is energy star. It says IDA dark sky friendly fixture approved. Um, and then it's got the little chart that I showed you. And then it has the lumens, which is 630 and eight watts. And then the lumens per watt efficiency is 78.75, which I guess those are all good things.
That's good. Yep.
Well, Joan.
Um, so we.
This demonstrates it's mainstream, what is being proposed. It's, it's, it's out there. It's the same standard that others are using.
But, but like I said, of their choice. Then we also, from our electrician, we got a catalog, a huge thick catalog with that, all the different types of lights. Um, you know, everything outside, inside, in the bathroom, you know, underwater, you name it. And they also were just full of all these fixtures that spew light in every direction. And, and they had an even less choice than, than Home Depot did. Um, so, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's new and I would love it. I, I, we only, we had, we bought one and we had it installed so that we can see. And it's very bright, um, brighter than what I would have wanted. But where we live, there is no additional light that comes to our house. Um, um, there's no street light. There's too much vegetation. No lighting comes from the nearby houses. So when we really need light outside, when we have like guests or an icy sidewalk that someone's walking up, we really need it to be enough light so it to be safe. We, we, we don't leave them on all the time, um, because we like the dark. But when we need the light, we've got the light. What you're talking about Cliff, about the lighting and where they use it, i.e. when we reviewed the, and I think it's the, um, UPS, I forget what they're called, you know, the, oh, United Parcel Service. The one that they, um, went, they wanted, that's in, um, West Lebanon. That's, you know, on the road, that's like halfway up the, um, way to the, uh, airport. I'm looking at a hummingbird. Cool. Um, they wanted, uh, incredible amounts of light. And we kept pushing them and saying, no, you, you know, that, that's not our rigs, you know, why do you want that? Why do you want that? Finally, after really pushing, they admitted it, that what they needed it for was to have, because they have cameras that monitor all of the, their packing of the trucks for theft.
But that might be another reason.
I mean, so.
Exemption.
And, and we were able to get them down lower, but they really wanted more than we allowed them to have. And that was, and so that's another reason is security. Some of these places just.
Yeah. Makes sense.
They're just security. That's why they want them so bright. Um, so.
That does align with what, um, I, I read elsewhere.
So it, it was a, it was a tough, you know, tough call, but at least we did compromise. So. Oh, and the other place, um, we were, you were talking about the, the U-Haul and if it's grandfathered, but that Tim and Dave will be able to hash that out. My contribution is at the ice skating rink that is, um, on Bank Street Extension, which is in my neighborhood. And in the winter, those, there's like four, there's like three light poles. They're really, really high because they were, it was done by the city and they wanted it to be cheap. And, because I talked to Karen Lille Hill about this and she loves going there and thinks it's a wonderful facility. But I go by there many, many times and the lights are on and they're, they're not on timers, they're not on dimmers. They're super bright and there's not a soul on, on the rink. And so to me, that's a really bad example that our city is setting itself. We're telling everybody, you know, more poles, lower poles, lower wattage, you know, dimmable or timers. And we are, we are not doing every single one of those ones that I said. So there's some more checking that should be done and, and. Inexcusable. Okay.
Joan, do you mind if I follow up with just one, one, one quick thing?
Sure.
Please. Uh, so Cliff, one other quick thought for Rebecca and Cliff. The only other, mention of security, is there any chance the police would want to weigh in on this?
Um, we, we did engage them on, um, the city, um, uh, policy, um, that attached here. Um, and they, they didn't really have any issue with.
Okay.
3,000 K at all. It, it's actually, it, it is going to provide better color rendering, um, and improve visibility compared to the high pressure sodium. Uh, because it is, it is a more full spectrum light, um, than, than what we currently have outdoors. So it's, it's going to be an improvement. Um, and of course they do like, I mean, there's a general bias towards more light, um, from sort of a law enforcement and security view. Uh, although I've done some research on that too, and, and, and evidence really doesn't quite support that. Um, there've been some interesting studies in England where they've dimmed down, uh, lights, um, partially through the night. And, and our policy allows dimming, uh, with the idea that, you know, you might take a lot. People need the most light, uh, uh, for, for traffic pedestrians and drivers around sunset and shortly after sunset and, and around dusk and dawn, around dawn, just before dawn. So, uh, some communities start dimming down lights an hour or two after sunset and, and then bring them up an hour or so before sunrise, uh, because, because that's where they provide the most benefit. And they, they found that it makes some, one, one or two studies have found it makes really no difference in crime if, if they're dimmed down as long as there's some light. Um, and in Europe, some communities actually are doing them on motion sensing. So that the lights basically very dim or off. And then, and then they slowly brighten as it detects pedestrian or vehicle traffic, which can actually have the eerie effect of feeling like you're being watched. So might actually deter crime if, if people, if they go down the street.
Yeah. The one, the one thing to follow up on that, Cliff, and is that, um, in planning, uh, there's crime prevention through environmental design and lighting's a big part of that. And, um, actually the brighter lighting creates stronger shadow effects, which make pockets, um, of dark and light contrast more and, and make crime more likely. So having, um, those shadowing effects reduced, um.
Yeah. A significant portion of my, my dissertation was on when light was first installed in cities in the 1870s and 80s. There was an obsession with that light would eradicate crime, that just by having street light, it eradicates.
I remember that. I remember that.
And it would actually, it's actually a reason why certain neighborhoods would get lots of light and, and some wouldn't because you care about these neighborhoods to have no crime. And it's a, and yeah, it doesn't, it, it, it maybe makes people feel better, but it doesn't actually necessarily eliminate things. Um, Tom, do you have any thoughts?
Uh, I had quite a number, but they, they were some time ago. I was glad that Kathy brought up the question about is it legal for the U-Haul place to have lights that they currently have, uh, that aren't shielded so that the light is going up into the sky? And my sense, I mean, it seems like those regulations like that around the country have been in place for a long period of time. Back in the, oh gosh, it was back probably at least 20 years ago. I was involved in cities where, you know, it was in the regulations that everything had to be forced down to the ground and not up into the sky. So that the dark sky initiative has been at least 20, 30 years old now. Um, I would be surprised if we don't have regulations that we could do something about that current situation now, at least force them to have some type of shields put on top of the lights to shield it from going upward.
Certainly.
Pardon me?
You, I think you can retrofit at least, not like completely replace the fixture, but, but augment them.
Right. So it's, so I think we should definitely have somebody look into that because, uh, the other thing that I've, I've noticed is just one more comment about LEDs, which I'm really in favor of. But LEDs in the much, uh, you know, in the warmer shades rather than the, uh, the cooler shades. And that is that as you're driving down the road, there are cars now that have LED lights in the, uh, you know, in their, um, you know, they're, they're, uh, lights. And if you've ever faced one of those, it's very difficult to recover from the glare that that causes. Uh, or even to shield your eyes from the brightness of them. So I think anything that we can do to support the, uh, the use of, you know, the numbers that are the warmer shades, I think we ought to do, whether it's in lighting for streetlights or if it's lighting for vehicles. So it's just, it seems the more practical thing. So I think that kind of summarizes any of the thoughts that I had.
Great. Thank you. Um, Joan?
Matt, I was just gonna say that with our regulations, um, I know that when Greg got on the, um, planning board from the very beginning, he was kind of our, the person who really pushed lighting regulations because he was working in the national parks and the national parks had this, you know, that was something they took on big, uh, with the parks out west. And, um, uh, so I think when they look in the regs, I think we might be able. And um, uh, so I think when they look in the regs, I think we might be able to. We might be able to find that, yes, we can get them to retrofit them for no upper light light spew. But so, yeah, that's what I'm going to say.
Great.
And the and the skating rink too, please.
I wonder if a motion sensor would work at the skating rink.
Oh, absolutely. Well, that's what Dartmouth had for years on their soccer fields um for years. And you and they were on the pole and anybody at all who wanted to, you know, play frisbee or or anything, you just went over to it and you got like 15 minutes of light. You wanted to keep playing, you sent somebody over to hit it again. I mean, it was very doable and that, I mean, and I'm talking 35 years ago.
Well, thi- this is great. I mean, it sounds to me, um, Cliff, Rebecca, it sounds to me. Uh, that the committee is in support of this and with the with the edit of making it 3,000 instead of 2,700. Um, and so I would say I think we can definitely bring this to the full board to um get enacted.
And are you saying that you want to do that um in advance of other proposed amendments?
I think this is pretty, um, this is, I think this is a single, you know, disconnected change from larger changes. I think we could. I I think we could easily add this to our um to a a planning session agenda. It wouldn't be a very long conversation. I don't think it would take too much time from any other agenda items. I think I think we could separate this and.
Okay.
Get it, get it, get it done by.
I I totally agree and the other big advantage of this is is that not only is this, is it healthier for humans? And it makes me think about working in dark rooms where the light was red. Because so that that kept your and and they do that in the parks. They use red flashlights. Because that keeps your night lighting, you know, your night vision working longer than to hit it with a with a bright light. Then you lose it, you gotta spend all that time getting it back again.
Fire departments do that too.
Oh, okay. Um, but it's also good for for the animal life. You know, any anything and so, you know, we've got this COVID and that's been triggered by climate change and so any little thing that we can put into our regs. That works against, you know, that helps deal with climate change is a win-win. Do it as fast as we can.
Well, I want to thank, I want to thank uh the councilman for being here today and giving his presentation and for his time. Um, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, well Rebecca, so um, does this all make sense for next steps?
Absolutely. Um, I just wanted to note the other change that's completely unrelated was we have. The multi-family recreational bit kind of misplaced in the lighting section. So we corrected that. I don't even think it's worth discussion unless anyone would like to, but um. Just to note it and make sure you were aware that that was the other change.
Yep.
You're not, there's no changes to it. You're just placing.
Yeah, exactly. It's just not under lighting.
Which makes sense.
This whole section is about lighting.
It 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 was just a, I don't know what happened over the years. It was a typographical, it was a a Scrivener's error that somehow that that section. Ended up here. It doesn't belong here, was never supposed to be here. It should be in under, I think, section 6.2 or something else, 6.3, something like that.
Maybe some, maybe some applicant thought having some lights outside was recreation. Look, we put, we put lights out there.
Yeah, that's fun. That's fun.
Hopefully we'll be addressing multi-family dwellings at some point in the not too distant future because. I think there's a real difference between a three-family property and 150-unit development and what the requirements should be, so.
So you mean the the minor site plan versus major site plan?
Yeah, we don't differentiate enough.
So um Rebecca, what is, I think, next, next is the review of potential amendments to subdivision regulations?
Right. Well, that's, I think, what we're going to continue to the.
Next time.
The August 27th meeting.
Yep.
And, you know, if Tim, if you have any comments on that or um previews, you're welcome to.
Um, I'll just, it, once again, it it was something that I naively thought would be relatively straightforward and of course becomes a lot more complex than. Originally envisioned and you end up falling down the uh rabbit hole of our regs and then the state statute and so. We had to just, we just have to do some more research and bring that to you uh next time we meet.
I think that sounds fine and and as Rebecca, Rebecca and I spoke before the meeting and I think. As you said Rebecca earlier, the more that the subcommittee can kind of have a few days to review. Things so that we can kind of come come to the uh to the next meeting with maybe some very specific questions about what's been. Offered and then what you offer also in the meeting, but we come in kind of educated, then we can kind of um hopefully have a a focused conversation or at least a start of a conversation because this is a big topic.
I wonder, not, I'm just wondering, you know. Would it be easier if there are materials for the subcommittee to review before, prior to a meeting? If they came through in an email that said. Review for August 27th meeting without all the links and everything else because you start getting. You know, I mean, you start storing these emails in different places and then you can't find a link in the meeting.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I think that if, I think that um whatever, you know, whatever.
Mine probably, exactly.
I think if, I think, you know, we can always get the the email about the meeting with anything to the link to the agenda on on the website, but yeah, I think that's a fair point that if we were able to get things. Sent directly just to just to the group of us attached on one email, a separate email that says, here's the things to review. I think that would be a good thing if we could do it.
Let's try it.
We can do that.
Well, Rebecca, do you have anything else you wanted to talk about today?
I do not. Uh, Tim?
No, thank you.
Tim, don't you have like, do you have like four or five more emails to send us today?
Oh man, I I'm really, I just, just so everyone knows, I I am going to prepare a proposed amendment to the board's rules of procedure. Uh, which the which the board can adopt fairly easily, uh, doesn't require a public hearing or anything. But just to make it crystal clear that to to establish a date by which materials need to be submitted.
Absolutely.
And it, I mean, it's it's totally out of control and so I I I it's it's very difficult. For staff right now without that rule to say no. Because it's 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 very difficult. Because then it's somebody, somebody could say, someone, someone could accuse us of being of of. You know, treating applicants differently because, you know, there there have been things that we've forwarded in the past and then. Regardless of how we've treated anyone else, um, you know, they they could, they could claim that we're simply being unfair. By not providing materials to the planning board as requested and so it's 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 just, it's. And these things are being submitted, I believe strategically, the timing is strategic. Um, and it's just, it's very frustrating. So I think we need to act quickly. To get a rule in our procedures that staff can point to to say, sorry, we cannot accept this.
It's not fair to us either because.
Oh, no, it's not.
Last minute, we can't ask you any questions about them.
And and staff is, this takes up a lot of staff time because we've got to send out separate emails, we've got to explain things, we've got to keep, I mean, it's a mess.
Tim, let me just, you know, my my perspective as chair for this issue is um, I think. This is, I think, like the lighting issue, I think this is a very discreet issue and it's a broader board issue. I think if you wanted to, my perspective, I mean, you guys decide, you're. Your staff, but I would say bring it, we don't need to go to the subcommittee for this, just go to the board.
No, and I appreciate that. This, it's a slightly different, it it, this would be the rules of procedure, so you're not looking at.
Oh, it's not our, it's not ours anyway.
It's, yeah, it's not the committee, it's not the subcommittees. Yeah, exactly.
But but but, Tim, I I could have sworn that we already have regulations about when things are submitted. Because this is something new that we're getting things at the last minute. Granted, something like uh the last minute. An applicant says, I can't go, I, you know, my wife is in the hospital, so I can't come. Clearly, something like that can come to us at the last minute, but this other stuff, absolutely no.
Right, well, isn't it, it's a matter of sweetness.
Excuse me, um Rebecca, all of the boards in the past have said this again and again that we we can't have lots of stuff at the last minute because we can't. Plan when we're going to read it for the meeting.
Yeah, and I and I think that's appropriate for you to.
Absolutely.
For you to 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 act accordingly, but I'm not comfortable not sending you the these these materials without something in writing. If there's, it's possible I missed something that's in the site plan regulations, but I don't think there's anything in there.
Well.
If there isn't, yes, we should, but.
But Tim, my question is, doesn't that fall under completeness, application completeness before it can be accepted by the planning board? Like, are we getting like materials that look like they're complete and they're saying, no, we have a revision? And then maybe it needs to be continued to, you know?
Rebecca, and these are the butters though that are sitting, sending these things in.
Well, I'm just, I'm just gonna stop things here because I think we're we're getting a little. I I I think we all agree, we all agree and this is all good stuff, but probably getting a little away from our purview.
Right.
But but Tim, you definitely, it sounds like you have the four of our blessing to uh to.
But but actually, on on the other hand, maybe maybe it is appropriate to not only amend the rules procedure, but also to amend the site. So maybe, let me give it some more thought. Maybe this is something for this committee.
Good idea.
Yeah, and check with David too.
Yeah, of course, of course, goes goes down the same, Joe.
Well, I'm pretty, yeah, I mean, that's always the way we've had it. I mean, anytime we got something to the last minute, even at that night, we'll say. You know, when we get something at our desk, if it's not something we can read in a couple of minutes, we're we're like, nope. This, we're this is, we're not off the table unless you want to stop our meeting right now, give us all 15, 20 minutes or half an hour to read this, forget it.
I mean, it it there's that, I know, but that's not, that's not, I don't agree that that's the way it should be done though, because. A public hearing is the is the forum within which you are to present evidence. And some and 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 some of that evidence can be written. There's nothing in it, there's nothing inherently inappropriate. About providing a a new written material to the board for their consideration at that moment. I mean, it's it's.
Something very simple, but it cannot be something that, which is what happened recently. You said, oh, don't worry about it, I'll talk you through it. And a couple of us said, no, you know, that's not the way we work.
Well, I'm just gonna, again, I'm gonna stop it, I'm gonna stop it here just, I I think, I think we all agree that this is something that should be addressed, but I think probably we don't need to do it in the subcommittee. Before before I I end uh our meeting and release school for the day. Kathy, Joan, Tom, do you have any final um sub uh subcommittee comments or 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 notes before we adjourn to the to August 27th?
I'm fine.
I'm good with adjourning.
I don't think we need an actual motion, but it sounds like Tom's willing to give it. All right, so we will see all of us uh Monday, but then we will see all of us in this forum again on Thursday, the 27th.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you, Matt. Thanks, everyone. Take care.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, do you need one?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
I'm only adjourn.
Oh, Kathy, I'll give it to Kathy. Second?
I'll second.
Tom, all right, we'll go for the.
Sorry.
That's fine. Uh, Matt, Matt votes aye. Kathy?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Alrighty.
Official unanimous. Thank you.
Take care.
Bye bye.
Good weekend.